Most to receive all the agenda.
Second one.
All favor?
Aye.
Most to receive all the minutes of our recess meeting, May twenty first, twenty nineteen. Our recess meeting made on the second, twenty nineteen. A regular meeting, May twenty third, twenty nineteen. A regular meeting in thirteen, twenty nineteen.
Sir?
Second.
Any discussion on those? All favor?
Aye.
I propose a like sign. Hearings and reports, commissioners?
How do you do? I just want to welcome everyone today, and I want to remind everyone, we do have new fireworks ordinance as we get ready for our Fourth of July celebrations. Fireworks are permitted from June the thirtieth through July the fourth, from noon till eleven. Please be respectful and considerate.
Which reminds me, chief, and over in my neighborhood somewhere, probably around us, because it's kind of a little bit distant, probably the last week there've been some major fireworks.
Yeah, we-
I didn't call it in. Somebody probably did.
The officers are trying to find it. They're- they're- we're not getting a call, so it's a problem. I can hear it from my house.
Yeah, I just don't get it. And I worry more about my pets, my neighbors' pets, they go crazy when they have that happen. I've got a couple huge rescue dogs, and their safety is bad. My bad. Not their bad.
Same in my house.
It's- they're up there more than I am, I'm sure, but anyway, I know it's difficult, we know that on the front end. It's a good ordinance, it's a good attention to a problem that we're a very elderly community, and- and out in some of these neighborhoods, it's very disconcerting to a lot of citizens. There's no need for-
It should be popping up on our Facebook page, we got it on a timing thing, so it should be popping up on our Facebook page. I think it's either-
We know it's a police issue, let's stay with it. Anyway, thanks commissioner for everybody's good time to remind people. Anyone else?
I'd just like to welcome everybody. A lot of stuff going on in our city, just walk down the street from block to block, you'll see all kinds of construction. I just want to make mention, summer motion is the twenty ninth through the fourth, and it will start in Central Park, and- and good to you out the fourth, where we'll have our- it's one of our signature festivals, we'll be all looking forward to. The limb work has started for the sensory garden, if you've been to the park, and the preparation is going on for that. Also, phase one of our new playground equipment in the tot lot will begin on August first. If you haven't been by the pickleball course, I mean, it's- it's hopping. I mean, a lot of- a lot of pickleball players down there, and there's going to be a tournament during the fourth. So I want to welcome everybody to our meeting and to summer motion.
My wife and I have started playing, and Thursdays is novice night. Now, we play a couple nights a week now. We haven't made it to novice yet, I can tell you. But that is Thursday, if you want. Some of the- some of the guys and ladies will- they're- they're very patient and kind and caring. Anybody that's just starting, they're so good to work with you. Of course, I'm a former athlete, so I'm pretty good at it. Scoring is the big problem for me. Totally different kind of scoring system. You gotta repeat it every time you get ready to serve, if you dump the leash, you serve. Get really irritated with that stuff like that. But anyway, it's a great sport. It's been going on quite a while, I'm glad we're doing it nationally. It's a- they- they light up, you know. We'll be down here tonight, and there'll be, you know, a ton of people. There are a lot of people coming from the tri-state area even, because of our- what we've done with it. So I'm- I'm kind of proud of that too. It's a great sport, kind of- kind of like golf, you can play it a long, long time, and help you stay in good shape, flexes, everything. And- and the courts are beautiful, they're absolutely beautiful. Tennis center is- is gonna add a couple more over there even, because Jerry's getting a huge call to have more of them over that way. So it's catching on, and I'm really happy about that. Anybody else?
You have in front of you, first I want to say, I'm back. I'm sorry I was out for a little bit. Traveled with the Ashland Lions, one is Kentucky and Kentucky Power, and two is Paris Airship. We had twenty meetings over the course of three days with aerospace and air dynamics companies, looking to expand or relocate, so that's a pretty interesting trip. We also visited the SMS training facility in Dusseldorf, Germany, which could potentially end up having some ties here as well. That's where I was, if anyone was interested. But in front of you is a report that I told you that I would get you about the Alliance's trip to Greenville. I know you've gone before. I'm not going to go through the whole big report, because you-
But actually, what you brought back, just glancing through it, I had never seen the before pictures. But that's-
Yeah, I mean, just for the public's information, and if you want this report, I can get it to you. I've got some other copies up here as well. Greenville is a city not unlike Ashland. Ashland's about thirty to forty years sort of behind where Greenville was, but they lost their major industry. They were a textile company, or a textile city, though everything was sort of centered around that. And that company closed, and they went through a period of decline, and their city leaders came together and sort of worked on a plan to bring themselves out of that decline, and they focused on their downtown, their central business district. And you can see from the before pictures, it looks like Winchester Avenue. And their after pictures, I hope, is what Winchester Avenue looks like when it grows up. And I'll get a little plug in in terms of, they- they took their main street down to two lanes, they did diagonal parking, there's trees in the middle, they widened the sidewalks, they actually closed offside streets to make them more guest rent friendly. And the interesting thing about our- our trip to Greenville is the city of Greenville, the Greenville Chamber of Commerce, they do this program for cities all over the country all year long. And they really have become sort of a case study for urban redevelopment, and so that's why we went. And they kind of gave us a kind of a how-to map for how they did it. And a lot of the things in their map, and at the end of this, if you kind of flip through my final notes, a lot of the things in their map, we're already doing. They started with a plan. You can't get anywhere without a very good plan, and of course, we're in the process of putting together our new comprehensive plan. So this is- the timing is- is perfect. They landed a major employer, BMW, well, we've landed a major employer, and their downtown redevelopment started with a hotel anchor. They put a hotel in to start, and that's what spurred the rest of it. So just, we're sort of running this parallel path from what they've already done, and so it's a great- a great place to go to figure out what to do next, and the pitfalls and those sorts of things. You know, we've already started neighborhood revitalization efforts, our restaurant and retail recruitment is really strong. We already host festivals and fairs on our streets. These are all the things that they say that we should be doing. We're investing in our parks and trails. So read through the- read through it, look at the pictures, because it was phenomenal. I think we plan on taking another- another trip back there, just to keep in the- in the loop about how to handle these things and what not to do, more than anything. On the back, I've given you all a little challenge about what I think- where we need to go. What they kept saying to us in Greenville is they- they had an elected body that was courageous enough to make decisions that- that were going to spur development. And- and you don't want to disregard public pushback, but- but there are sometimes decisions that need to be made that- that half of the people aren't happy with, but it's best. And yeah, every time I get the chance to say Winchester needs to go to two lanes, I'm gonna say it a hundred times. Pedestrian rules are worse. And then what the biggest part they say is, you know, be intentional about what we're gonna do. Create this plan, get the right people at the table to make the plan, and that includes the business community, the education community, leadership from schools, the young people, what do they want? Get all of those people at the table when we're making this plan, follow that plan. And in Greenville, we heard over and over and over and over, if we heard it once, we've heard it a thousand times. This was city-owned property, this was a partnership with private development. We can't be afraid of those things, because really, that's gonna be the thing. We're gonna have to have public sector money in our development in order to make this thing happen. So, there you go.
I think the city manager, we talked, lengthy period of time when he got back, he was most impressed with cooperative efforts and government, I think they still go Chamber of Commerce.
And Chamber of Commerce. And tourism.
And tourism.
Well, I think in corporations.
Yes.
But you said the county and the city did not, that wasn't a big one?
It wasn't a combative relationship down there, but they said they could have been tighter, but even though collectively they overcame that. Was that your impression, commissioner?
Yeah.
Because it was the rising tide floats all boats attitudes of the county and the city. They agree to disagree on things, but it's not combative.
Well, we- we, with Judge Chaney, I know, I've worked with several judges, typed up in mayor and also as a commissioner, and he is- he is a real positive leader. And from day one, he met with me before he even got sworn in, or I got sworn in, about needing to cooperate more, which, you know, is exactly what all of us are interested in doing. We always have worked towards that. You have some very similarities, you know, in the same people, we're all Boyd counties. And that's sometimes the toughest thing to get across, that we- we pay a lot of- you know, pay a lot of taxes, the county as well, provide a lot of services and so forth and that. And Judge Chaney is a real epitome of wanting to be county-city cooperative, everything we possibly do in order to provide better services to residents, but also at the most efficient and effective way, efficient in saving as much tax money as we can. So we do have, in my opinion, a great relationship with the prison office, and that will continue, and I think you need that, and I think we all need that. There are a lot of good things on the horizon for Ashland, and everybody's working on some- some aspects, and some we can't bring up yet, because it may not make it, and, you know, no sense we can bring it up. But all of us have been working hard on a few things that are just be catalysts for more development. So I'm glad you went, glad you brought this up. Anybody else? Manager?
Sir, I've got a couple of things. First, before I forget, I want to announce our next board of commissioners meeting is not until the twenty fifth of July at noon. City only holds one meeting per month in July. Couple of good news stories I wanted to share with you. First off, I received a letter from a Miss Anna Ellis, basically thanking the city for all the work. On May eighteenth, it's part of the repair fair, she wanted to thank the employees from Marathon. She said her shed has a new roof, the bush was removed from her driveway, it laid there for two years. Back patio and hauntings were pressure washed, her flower beds were mulched. She expressed she was so overwhelmed, she couldn't believe how much better it looked. It brought her to tears when she described this to her friend. She was unable to do these things by herself, and it made her sad to watch it all pile up. She said she's gonna sit outside with pride on her clean patio, and just wanted publicly everybody to know that. So Miss Anna Ellis. The second good news is from the Kentucky League of Cities, this is referring the National Police Department. Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Review Score Card, which is a bi-annual rating, National Police Department received a hundred percent, which results in twelve percent reduction in cost on premium for our law enforcement liability insurance. This is three reviews in a row that we've maintained this, and we're usually only one of a dozen or so that are covered by the league that achieves and maintains the one hundred percent. So hats off to APD, and also the work that Mike Atkins does, the worst in the insurance realm. Mike is still off due to an injury, but we hope to have him back soon where he'll give an update on insurance. Another good news story, due to professionalism, dedication to hard work of operators at the wastewater treatment plant here in Ashland, we're set to receive the twenty eighteen Kentucky-Tennessee Water Environment Association Operational Excellence Award. It's presented publicly to publicly owned and industrial wastewater treatment facilities who have achieved permit compliance during the previous calendar year by having no more than one violation of the permit. The award will be presented on August twentieth at the annual Kentucky-Tennessee Water Professionals Conference. Only about twenty-three facilities in Kentucky and Tennessee combined receive this recognition. So hats off to Mark and his entire team down at the wastewater treatment plant. Next, mayor and commissioners, we have representatives here from Barton and Low Judas to give their report. Before I do that though, I want to recognize some folks that are in the crowd. First off, Ashley Bowen, if you could raise your hand, and also Mark Martin, our teammates of ours from the state, from the Division of Water. I want to recognize Mark. He knows intimately the challenges we have here in the city, and was able to find Barton and Low Judas, I don't want to mispronounce it, Rich. And it's been a real home run for us. I feel a lot better about where we are on analyzing our problem as a result of this. Somebody who couldn't be here today is Steve Scheider from Xylem Leopold, who have been our underdrain and filter. We've been working with them for many years. They also participated in part of the study, which I think Mr. Stroud is going to cover. But that- that was a hugely beneficial asset for us to have, and they dedicated a lot of manpower and time to helping us troubleshoot this, which resulted in the product that you're going to see in a minute. And then internally, I want to publicly recognize Ryan Eastwood, the city engineer. Also, Bill Stanwell and Frank Worsley, if you guys could raise your hands, from the water treatment plant. They and their team have been working feverishly for the past couple months since we had the underdrain buckling, and just burning at both ends, I appreciate all the work that they did. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Stroud from Barton and Low Judas.
Good afternoon, thanks for having me. I hope you don't mind if I walk around a little bit, if that's okay. I may want to point to some things, and I want to start out by- Ryan, while Ryan's gonna click the slides for me, so. You can go to the first one. I want to start out by saying, you know, who am I and why am I here? So I think generally, though, Mr. Graze explained, that we were asked to help figure out what's been happening at the water treatment plant, and what was the cause of the- of the filter damage, the buckling of the underdrains. And from there, what can we do, what can the city do to prevent that from happening in the future? And then adding on to that, what are some of the restrictions? What are some of the issues that are happening at the water plant that are restricting its ability to produce the full amount of water that it's expected to produce? So I'm gonna step through that, that's why I'm here. And as Mr. Graze explained, Mark found me, I think, from the internet, doing a search of who has investigated these types of problems before, while that's me and my team. So that's why we're here, that's why we're called in. And what I want to do is go through a little bit of, an explanation of how the water plant works. I won't get too deep into it, but I want to make sure that you have enough background, and the public has enough background to understand what I'm talking about, as I get into some of the detail. And then what did we find, and what are our recommendations? So we're gonna talk a little bit about the buckling, we're gonna talk about some other problems with air in the water filtration plant, and in some issues about the capacity of the water filtration plant. So as Mr. Graze explained, we really did have a very open process. For my team, Greg Moser, Don Davis, Lisa Potts and I were really the prime people. We worked very closely with the city staff, Mr. Graze, Mr. Eastwood, Mr. Stanwell, and his team were very forthcoming, providing information, and working very openly with Xylem Leopold, Steve Scheider, Scott Cable, Eric Benet, Akian. Had been in the plant, they installed instrumentation to take measurements, they had some testing done, they shared their information with us, we shared ours with them, and I think it really resulted in a much more thorough analysis. So just wanted to recognize the openness of this process and how it worked. I think it came together very well. So again, why am I here? This is a- this is a picture of the underdrains that have buckled. There's a few of them, Ryan, if you want to click through them. If you get down closer, these are all supposed to be flat, they're not supposed to look like a tent. So what happened was these underdrains pushed up, and we call this a catastrophic failure of the underdrains. The first few pictures are of a failure a couple of years ago, and this picture is of the latest failure in filter number six, which had just had new media support caps, I'll explain what that is. Media support caps put on the underdrains. So the underdrains themselves are the piece below the black media support cap. The water flows through the filter, through the sand and anthracite filter, to be- filter, it comes from the top down. The black caps hold that sand and anthracite from washing out. So that's- that's what the sand and anthracite sit on. Flows through these caps, which are porous, and into a channel, basically. So the underdrains are a series of channels under those support caps and under the filter media. That's what blew out. Basically, that- that underdraining channel popped, and that's what we're really, we're investigating. This is a picture, this is the final picture of the underdrain failure from this latest one. And you can see that at the bottom of the picture is what they call a grout bed. So when they build these, they have basically a concrete box, and they lay down some grout, and they set these underdrain blocks on that grout to hold them down, okay? Then they set, between the underdrains, they have a gap of a couple of inches, and they'll fill that up with grout. So what's being pointed at in this is you have a bed, the bed of grout that cures. They set- or they set the underdrains in it, and then it cures, and then they put the other grout in between the underdrain blocks. So what they're looking at here and pointing to is a cold joint between the bed of grout and the grout that goes in between the underdrains. But you can see again, on the one on the left where it popped up and the filter media got underneath it, and the one on the right is still pretty much in place, and the one behind it has also popped. So that's why I'm here, because of that. A little bit of background on the water plant, this is an aerial shot. Most of- most of what we're going to be talking about is in the buildings, so there's not a whole lot you can see from the aerial shot. But this is a plant that was originally built, I believe, in nineteen fifty-five, had expansions in nineteen seventy-nine, two thousand and five, sometime in the eighties, nineties, there were some changes, there were other modest changes, I believe, you know, in between these major changes. Then in twenty fifteen, there was another major upgrade, and the latest work that's been going on is to change the- the media support caps to a new style. So this is what they call hydraulic profile of the water plant from one of the upgrades, from the major upgrade in two thousand and five. So the light, the things that are shown light color here are things that were already there in two thousand and five. The things that are shown in dark color are things that were gonna be built in two thousand and five. So going from left to right, what you can see is, we start at the river intake, water gets pumped up to a reservoir, and then it flows by gravity from the reservoir down to and through the plant. First, it comes into the first, as you move left to right, you can see that first block of dark picture there. It comes into a settling process, it's called the active flow process, you may have heard that. And basically, what that is, is to take the major large particles out of the water. So there's a sand process and chemicals that are added to help settle that material out before it goes to the filters. It then travels through a pipe, and goes to the next block, the darker block there. There's a series of, I guess you could say either six or twelve filters. Each filter has a different half, so we'll call it six filters. In two thousand and five, two filters were added to the plant, that's why those are shown in dark. You had existing filters, and they were modified, and two more filters were added. In this process, in this project, the filter underdrains were changed from what's called a Wheeler bottom underdrain, different style, I had basically cones with these large balls in them that held the media, to the Leopold type underdrain blocks with the media support caps on them. And two additional filters were built, so you had four filters and added two. From, if you go farther to the right, you'll see one little dark circle over there, that's representing a backwash pump. We're gonna talk a lot about the backwash pump. So it doesn't show a lot on this, but what happens is, when these filters, as they- as they operate, and you're adding particles to them, they clump, and they need to be cleaned. So the water normally comes down through the filter media, you add it to the top of the filter box, flows down through the filter media into the underdrains, and eventually finds its way to the clear well. Every once in a while, when these filters get loaded up, they have to be cleaned, and there's an air scrub process and a backwash flow process. And water's reversed, and it comes back up through the underdrains, up through the filter media, and the idea is to take the dirt, let it go over some weird troughs, and wash it, wash it out. This is a cutaway of the filter, so if you look at the plant, and you were in the plant, and you kind of sliced down through the filters down to the basement, that's what theoretically you would see, is a picture. So down underneath, you'll see the clear wells, that's where the filtered water goes before it gets pumped to the piping system that comes through your houses. And just before that is the filter. What that, what the- what the- the plant includes is a dual media filtration process of sand and anthracite. The anthracite is on top, it's a little bit lighter, and more porous. That water flows through that first, and then comes into a layer of sand, and then into the underdrains, and then eventually down into the clear well. And the troughs I was talking about for the washing, you can see up on the top, above the filter media, when the water is expanded, or when the filter is expanded, the sand kind of floats, you know, and is pushed up, and scrubs around, and the dirt's released from it. It's backwashed at a rate that would leave the sand in the filter box, but the water with the dirt comes up over those troughs and flows away. This is a picture, and these are all drawings that I took from the plans from your various upgrades, by the way. This is a picture that shows some of the basement area where the pumps are. Down in the lower left is the backwash pump. And I'm just showing you this so you can get a picture of it, I'm gonna show it to you in a more meaningful way in a little bit. This is- this is the backwash pump, and on the upper right, you can see an actual picture of the backwash pump. But this is a drawing. So coming from- from the left, there's a lower pipe that draws water out of the clear well. It comes up through the column of the pump. The very, the thing on the top of the pump is the motor. So the pump itself has, is in the column, comes up through to the second floor of the filtration building, and then bends down, you can see in the picture that the pipe bends down and goes back down under the floor, and then into the larger pipe over to the left. And that's what feeds the filters when they backwash. So the water comes out of the clear well, up through the pump, back down, and into the, what we call the backwash header that feeds the filters. There's a pipe coming in from the right-hand side, that's typically not used. That's a pipe that comes from your toboard tank, which is an elevated water storage tank. Normally, water is pumped to that to feed the rest of the city, but you have the ability to bring water back through that, through a flow control valve that's shown right close to the bottom of the pump column. And I won't spend much time on this, but this is just a- another picture of the filters, and how they're laid out a little bit closer, with the underdrain blocks in the small section down here, which are those channels I explained. On the very top of those is the media support cap, and on top of that is where the sand and anthracite sits. This is a picture from when an air- the air scrub process was put in, which you didn't have before twenty fif-
Two thousand and fifteen.
Twenty fifteen. The air scrub process was in, was put in, which- The air scrub process was in, was put in, which basically helps to clean the media better than just using the water. So kind of jumping to, I guess, the conclusion that we found. I told you I was going to talk more about the backwash pump. So here's the backwash pump again. So we looked at a lot of data, and this is one of the places where Xylem was very helpful. They actually came and installed some pressure gauges in the plant, and one in particular that was very helpful, well, two. One is on that backwash header down in the basement that this pump feeds to. And then another one was on the filter, just after the filter underdrains on filter number five, which is one of the new filters. And what we were able to find from that data, I'm going to show you some graphs of that later, is that there's, when this pump starts and stops, there's pressure surges that occur, like very high-pressure surges. So this pump has what's called an across-the-line starter on it. So I'm trying to remember the horsepower. This, this pump pumps about 7,200 gallons a minute when it comes on.
150.
So it's a big pump.
100 horsepower.
It's a 100, 100 horsepower pump. Pumps 7,200 gallons a minute when it comes on. So what does it mean, an across-the-line starter? It means that when the switch is thrown to put this pump on, it tries to come on and up to speed as fast as it can. It's just a, it's just a slam. So what happens is you've got water that's not moving, and you've got all this energy that's trying to move, start moving that as fast as it can at 7,200 gallons a minute. So, you know, just think about trying to push your car down the road, right? You've got to put a lot more energy into that to get it moving than you do once it's moving. So what happens is there's a pressure surge. And Xylem had put a gauge on so we could measure that under the filters, and we were seeing pressure surges go anywhere from, I'll say 15 PSI up to 30 PSI, depending on which, when they were backwashing. The underdrain system that is installed is not designed for that, and typically would not be designed for that kind of a pressure surge. It's designed for about 7 PSI. So every time that that pressure surge comes, it's kind of like, I describe it as, you know, if you're standing there and somebody's hitting you in the gut, you can take it for a few times, but after a while, you're going to buckle. And what happened in the underdrains is after a while, a couple of buckles. So time after time, when this backwash pump starts, you're getting that. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Have you, have you all seen this at places you've been, called me into a couple of sheet?
We've, we've seen this, but typically what, and what you're going to, what you're going to hear from our recommendations is what we typically see and how a plant is typically set up to avoid that pressure surge. So, so I'm going to jump into the recommendations from that, but yeah.
Richard, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's critical to your recommendations, but I wanted to remind the board that four of the six filters have been changed to the IMS CAP 200s. We still have the traditional media gravel, sand and anthracite on filters three and five.
Right. So in 2005, a media support cap was installed, which was a beaded cap, what they call it, the traditional cap. With some of the, with some of the problems that were happening, those caps were removed and gravel was put in, which is a more traditional type of media support. So I think you have nine inches of gravel, if I recall. 10 inches of gravel. Okay. Which is fairly shallow gravel layer. The reason that people actually use media support caps is because it gives, it allows you more driving head on the filtration media, which is kind of important at this point, to have some driving head. That gravel media has rolled, and this with the air issues that we're talking about is the reason of roll. But recognizing that a roll, there's a project underway that the city's implementing now to put a new style cap on. And that last failure was a failure of underdrains with a new style cap. So again, this is the result of that hammer for the backwash pump. So what are our recommendations? Some of these, you know, we've been talking about this for the last several weeks since we've been working on the project. So some of these, the city, city manager, Mr. Eastwood, the water plant staff have started implement already, which is good. Short term, one of the things that's done is to start the backwash pump against a closed valve. So downstream of the pump, there's a valve. And when you start the pump, if you start it, but have that valve closed, you're not going to get that surge against the, the underdrains. So if you start the pump and then slowly open the valve, it'll kind of ease the water in, if you will, and allow it to come to, or slowly come up to the 7,200 gallons a minute. The city has already implemented this, and is starting the pump against a closed valve. The second short-term fix is underway now as well. I'm going to show you a picture of this in a second, is to secure the underdrain, underdrains. One of the reasons that we're, we, Xylem had recommended it, we agree with it. One of the reasons that they recommend it is, we don't know how much damage has been done, if and, to the underdrains that haven't popped, okay? But if damage has been done and they haven't fully popped, this is a way to try to secure them and not have them pop up. So I'm going to show you some pictures of those. It's a lot less expensive to do that than it is to rip out underdrains and build a whole new underdrain system in the filter. Longer term, we're recommending, you know, putting a variable-speed drive on the backwash pump as opposed to starting it on a closed valve. It's very stressful for a pump to start on a closed valve. It's basically trying to, it's got 100 horsepower, trying to push water, and it's going nowhere. It stresses and strains everything. So what we're recommending is a variable frequency drive be put on the pump. That's basically a device that when the pump starts electronically, will start it at a slow speed and let it ramp up over time. And likewise, you can program it to shut the pump down that way. So that will alleviate that hammer. And then the other recommendation is avoid backwashing with the pump altogether, if you can. It's more ideal to pump water up into a tank and then backwash from the tank because you don't have those hydrodynamics of the pump. What I learned in talking with the city staff on that is that you have the deboard tank that will allow you to do that. It's a, it's a tank that's not at the plant, but the pump, there's a dedicated pipe that goes up to that tank and back to the tank. There's no customers off that, that pipe. So it appears as though that, that pipe could be used. You're already, you're piping this setup in the plant to allow you to backwash that way. So there is a plan being developed to backwash from the, or tank. So these recommendations, we think, will alleviate, and you're already seeing that they're alleviating the water hammer on the underdrains, and should mitigate that failure from happening again. This is a picture of the reinforcing anchors that I mentioned. This came from Leopold and from another filter, but it's basically just a system where they drill down in between, they're grouting between the filter blocks. They anchor a threaded rod into the floor, and they install that clip to kind of hold everything in place. This just shows the backwash from the deboard tank. I kind of explained this earlier, that there's a flow control valve. The water would come in from the left, the pump would not be turned on to do, execute the backwash, and there's a path for the water to come through that flow control valve and into the backwash header to backwash the filter. So those are, those are the recommendations to mitigate the underdrain failure. I was going to, I'm now going to go on to treatment, but before I do that, does anybody have any questions or anything before I move on?
Well, the reason that they buckled is probably the pressure is greater than it was designed for begin with and been there a long time. And I know I was up there the other day to watch them, and the stake those were in right there, they were, they were mortaring, you know, whatever the mixture was, in between every one of those, as they already looked like that picture. And I'm sure that that, the way they were doing it was making sure that it got down there and spread deeper and spread out. They, they were very meticulous about it. That's why I said a little bit earlier, have, have you seen similar situations like this? And part of, part of our problem with the backwash is we didn't have an air release valve. Now we have it, and guys, we've already been able to tell a positive difference from that.
Right.
And I don't know, in going through this, so no engineering, my big problem is, but I don't know if it's a case of, right, is, do we have part of more horsepower on that pump than the prior pump, or has that one been there a long while?
No, this one was installed in 2003, 2005 with the plant upgrade, but it's designed to deliver 7,200 GPM to the filters. That's actually what's required by AWWA and also Leopold. So it's not oversized. It's just too large of a pump to start against a non-closed valve. It was descended service.
So years ago, there did, there was, as I understand it, there was a smaller pump, but it didn't pump directly to the filters. It pumped into a tank that's now decommissioned through the plant, filled that tank up. So it didn't have to pump at 7,200 gallons a minute. It had time to fill that tank up, and then the 7,200 gallons a minute would come out of that tank.
So the clips that were in that picture, right, also installed, plus the...
I was going to clarify something. That has not begun, that the process of the underdrain reinforcement that has begun is that the underdrains that were put in filter six alpha are the newest version. They have hooks, and they can withstand up to 30 PSI. They have limited retention straps in there, but not what you saw in that picture.
Right.
What we need to do in the future on the remaining filter beds is to install those, all threads and the clamps that Mr. Straub described. And that was not part of the emergency spending that you all approved prior. The emergency spending that you all approved is what happened in six A. Don't miss anything?
No, that's correct.
So we have, we have, our road ahead looks like this. We still have to change the caps on filters three and five. We have to take the old traditional media out. As part of that process, that'll be the easy part of the process because we'll have all the media out of there at that time. We are getting quotes, Mayor Commissioners, on what those all threads will cost for somebody to put in, to epoxy in. That then raises the PSI to...
I don't, I don't have a number.
It's more than seven?
It's more than seven.
And it might be up to, I don't want to say a bogus number.
I think they said 13 or 14.
But that avoids the cost of replacing 11 other filter sets with the new underdrains. And your recommendation, or you all feel that that is adequate to reduce the body blows that those have received over X amount of years?
Well, so reducing, reducing the body blows is by starting against a closed valve, putting in the BFD ultimately, or backwashing from the tank. Even though the body blows will be much more subdued, there may have been damage. So what we did, you know, Xylem had sent out some concrete for testing. They shared the test with us. The concrete that was in there was very competent. I think it broke at about 5,000 PSI, which is a pretty good number. They did, they did see that there was a period of time that that cold joint had been separated before it actually broke, fully broke. So it showed that, suggested that there was some weakening before it just catastrophically failed. My, my concern is, you may have some weakening, and repeated lower body blows could eventually blow those. And I, I feel like, that, I believe that the clips will help protect your investment. Okay? So there are a lot, it's a lot less expensive to install those clips than to hammer out all the underdrains, put in the 30 PSI underdrains and all new caps. So it's kind of like putting, you know, suspenders on with your freight belt.
So do you feel that this 2005 upgrade was flawed in its design?
Well, I wouldn't, I don't think the underdrains were flawed in their design. The underdrains were...
But we would have paid somebody to take that into account.
What, what I think the, what I would say the problem was, was having a pump that's an across-the-line start and having those pressure surges come from that pump. That should have, in my view, been set up not to have those pressure surges at that time.
And one other, one other point, Mr. Straub pointed to doing the elevation backflow from the deboard tank. Existing in our plant is a hundreds of thousands of gallons retention tank that was used. We estimate, Frank and Bill have done some research, probably the last time it was used is in the late seventies or early eighties. And unfortunately, can't piece together why they stopped using that, why they went with the pump. And so it's a little bit frustrating to know that that capability is there. Must have been some type of reasoning, we just can't piece together why, even when you looked at the 79 plans, correct?
Right.
So we're going to have these, four and five, what'd you say?
Three and five still need to be done.
Okay. So we obviously are going to be prudent in, in the clips. Now, would those also entail the mortaring between those that I saw going on the other day? Would not need to do that?
Those, that would involve the clips.
That avoids removing all the grout there?
So at this point, the only ones that you'll put the new underdrains in and re-mortar would be the ones that, the one that had, so I actually failed.
Buckled up.
And if you have another failure at some point, if the clips weren't enough, then you'll have to do something like that.
At that point, probably look at even different options, stainless steel type, other type of underdrain filtration systems that are maybe more state-of-the-art than 15 years ago.
Right. These things change all the time. So this new media support cap is only a few years old, for example. And then, you know, I remember when they didn't even make any of those things. I mean, it's, the technology change is continuous. So then, to move on to talk about the treatment capacity, there's a few issues that we've identified, you know, in terms of ability to actually, so the plant was intended to produce 24 million gallons per day. The staff has indicated to me that they've been able to produce about 14 at most. Maybe it can get more, you can go higher than that, maybe not. That's uncertain, and I think there's an initiative to actually prove that out. It's going to be coming up. But for sure, there's, there's a concern over the ability of the plant to produce the flow that it was intended to produce. So we've, we've examined that. There's some more, I think, definition that will have to happen to that. We took a first look at it. And there's a couple of things that come, that come to light in our, one is you have what's called low driving head. And I think I've mentioned this before, but basically what the driving head is, is how much water do you have over top of the filter media, okay? To push the water through the filter. You don't have a lot of depth of water over the filter media. And it's a physical constraint at the plant. It's not like you can say, well, let's add more. You really, you really can't just add more. It's a, it's a constraint of how the plant was built when all the concrete was poured, if you will. So you have low driving head situation. It limits the filter runtime, and it also, right now, is resulting in a vacuum condition within the filter media that, you know, causes effervescence within the filter. So when we, when we came to the plant, we talked about the fizzing, if you will, the effervescence in the, in the filters. It's almost like when you open a bottle of soda, you see fizzing because the pressure that's, is reduced. Well, that's what's happening to a different, a little bit differently, but the same principle in your water filters. So when you get that fizzing, it can lead to air binding in the filters. You get little air bubbles that get trapped in the filter, and they take up space, and you can't get as much water through, and you have to backwash those out more frequently. So there's, there's that, and uncontrolled air. So I want to talk a little bit about the fizzing. This is, this is going to be a little bit difficult to explain, but this is a, an exhibit from our report. but this is an exhibit from our report. On the right-hand side, you can see kind of a profile of filters into the clearwell that I've shown you before. On the left-hand side, with the graphs and the lines, is what we're calling a pressure profile, okay, of what's happening theoretically through, as water travels through the filter. So at the very top, where you see the triangle and the little dashes, it says maximum water surface. That's about 4.4 feet above the top of the filter media, the enter site. So that's your driving head, is 4.4 feet. Most of the filters of this type that I've seen have more driving head than that. So this is the amount of driving head is, head is pressure. This is the amount of pressure that you have pushing water through the plant. So if you had more pressure, what happens is you lose pressure as the filter clogs. Okay? So if you had more pressure to start with, more driving head to start with, you'd be able to get longer filter runs before you got to a point where you had to clean them. That's the issue, the main issue with the low driving head. So what this is showing is, at the blue line, that's where the top of the filter media is. At the red line is where the top of the underdrain is. Okay? So you have that water coming through. So as you come down from the upper-left corner of the graph, you see the dash line coming down. That's showing the pressure profile coming to the top of the filter media. And then you see a couple of different lines coming over to the left and then back over to the right. We're only really concerned here about what's above the red line. So when the filter is clean, okay, that's represented by the line that comes down, the pressure line that comes down to the far right. As it gets dirtier, that pressure profile moves to the left. What's being shown here is the depth on the Y-axis and the pressure on the X-axis. From the vertical line that has the numbers on it, you have positive pressure to the right. To the left of that, you have negative pressure. You have a vacuum. So what we're trying to show there is, as the filter gets loaded up with particulates as it's operating before a backwash, that pressure profile is going to start moving further and further to the left. And when you get to a certain, to a point, you're going to have negative pressure. When you have negative pressure, that's when gas is released from the water. And you have a lot of dissolved oxygen, dissolved air in the water. It's released, and it'll cause that fizzing. So again, what I think is happening is, number one, the operators don't have much instrumentation in the plant to measure the pressure. There's a pressure gauge on one filter right now that Xylem had put in. There's a project underway to design instrumentation and controls for the plant that will put pressure gauges, pressure sensors on these filters. But to a large degree, the operators are flying blind with regard to what's happening with regard to the pressure through the plant. But we were able to measure this, and we were able to see this happen, that there is a negative pressure, there's a vacuum created at the underdrain, and, you know, that's how we came to the conclusion that that's the cause of the fizzing and the air binding within the filters. When those get bound, you have to backwash again, because they just will lock up. Any questions on that? I know that's pretty technical.
Is there anything, Mr. Eastwood, that we have currently, as part of the budgeted SCADA instrumentation that is not covered? Does anything come out of this report that needs to make adjustments to our SCADA instrumentation plan?
No, we've made the adjustments with GRW as the recommendations have come out in preliminary from Barton and Low Judas. So we've made a couple changes to the SCADA package that are going to be bid, hopefully in August, to incorporate these. But overall, we already had most of these recommendations already designed in.
Thank you. So the one that Ryan just showed, I just added the pressure gauge over to the right. It's my highly technical pressure gauge. This is some recordings from that pressure gauge. I just want to kind of show you what the data is showing us. The blue lines are pressure measured on the backwash header. So that's really representative of what the pump, the backwash pump itself is doing as it pushes water into the header. And this is all since the, been starting against a closed valve. The green line is representing what's happening with the pressure at the, just downstream of the underdrains of filter number five. So what you can see on this is, and the red line is zero PSI. Okay? So what you can see is that, that green line tends to come down, and then it drops, and then it comes back up. Every time it comes back up, a backwash has happened. So the filter's been cleaned. As it's coming down steadily, that's the filter in operation. And that's where the pressure loss, the loss of pressure through the filter is increasing to a point where it's getting into a negative pressure situation. The negative pressure's been seen on the gauge. So that just represents what happens during the filter cycle. You clean it, you restore the cleanliness, the water flows through it more unobstructed, or as unobstructed as it can. As the particulates are caught by the filter, it starts to clog. The pressure drops to a point where it has to be cleaned again. Okay? So the operations staff, I think, is, at least in one of the filters, now able to see the pressure if they go down and they look at it. But, you know, up until a few weeks ago, there was no way to even know what the pressure was there. So that's the low driving head issues and how they relate to limitations of flow and then through the plant, through the filters, and limitations with regard to the air binding. Okay? There are other issues of uncontrolled air that are exacerbating the backwash situation, actually increasing that hammer, because we get air pockets in the backwash line, and also disrupting the backwash process itself so that you're not getting as good a clean as you otherwise would. There's three main areas that we found. One is, there's air pockets in the column of the pipe that goes vertically from the basement up to that old decommissioned tank that we talked about, the backwash tank, where the backwash used to come from. That pipe goes from the basement up three or four stories.
About three stories.
Three stories, I think. And then there's a valve at the top that's closed. So that, it's a dead pipe, but it hasn't been removed. The tank is removed from service, but the pipe sits there. And the valve is at the top that's closed to kind of isolate that from the tank. So there's a pocket of air that gets collected in there. There's some leakage that gets into the backwash pump through packing and those kind of things. And then we've also believed that there's vortexing, where air gets sucked in when that backwash pump turns on, and the water level in the clearwell is low. It's kind of like when you flush your toilet, everything swirls around. Well, when you are drawing, when you run a pump and the water level's low at the suction, you get a vortex, and air can get sucked into the pump. So those three areas are areas where we see air potentially getting in and causing problems within the system. This is showing where that air column is. This is my great artwork here. Coming off the backwash pump, there is a pipe that just goes up. And again, it doesn't do anything now. It's just an abandoned pipe. And I think the reason it's left there is it's a very difficult pipe to remove. It's a big pipe. It's in a basement area that's hard to get to. And in order to remove it, you're going to have to deal with a lot of water that's in all these other pipes that are still active. So it's very difficult to remove. In the, when I talk about air leaking into the pump, there's a, the pump, backwash pump has a packing. And when the pump turns off, water tries to drain out of this high loop in the pipe there, and a little bit of air will get in and get stuck in that high loop in the pump at the discharge. And then on the left, I'm showing the clearwell. When the water level is down, the water level moves quite a bit in that clearwell. If it gets down to, say, five feet, or it's a 10-foot-deep clearwell, it gets down to five feet or so, you can start to get vortexing and start to suck air in. So that all together will allow, from this column, I'm sorry, I didn't explain the column. That should be theoretically filled with water. But what happens is it actually is getting air sucked into it. That valve at the top is a little bit leaky. Bill and his staff actually took a video during a backwash, and you can see air sucking and hear air sucking in through the valve. It's an old valve, it just doesn't seal exactly tight. So over time, you're getting air built up in that column. And then as the water, that backwash pump turns on, you've got 7,200 gallons a minute coming into that pipe header and making a right-hand turn. And you've got this stack, this column over here with air in it, and it's deducting some air into it, we believe. So those three sources, we have some recommendations on fixing that. We've actually talked a lot, a lot of these ideas, in collaboration with the city staff, so... Okay, I got a little bit out of order on this one. The other thing that we're, I throw in here is a recommendation from, a talk with Xylem about how to backwash the filters. We're going to talk more with staff on how, what would have to be done in order to do this. One of the problems that's happening is in the sequence of the backwashing. Xylem is very concerned, and I tend to agree with them, that if we backwash one side with air, and then we backwash the other side with air while this one sits. And then we backwash this one with water while this one's sitting. And then we backwash the second side with water. So typically what happens is you do an air scrub, and then you go right into a water scrub. And it doesn't allow all the filter media to settle back down and trap those particulates back into that. The process right now, because of the way the equipment's set up, doesn't allow that to happen. So they have to do this sequentially. What works, what Xylem has suggested, and we agree with them, is that we figure out how to backwash each side sequentially. So you do air, go right into a water. Then you do air, go right into a water on the other side, which will help get you longer filter runs. Okay? So recommendations. Short-term, this is already done. We recommend putting on an air-vac release valve on the backwash pump to release air that gets trapped in at the pump discharge. That's there, and so we're not sending that slug of air through the backwash where it comes into the underdrains and into the filters and causes problems. Also evacuate air in that riser column. We've talked about how to do that. And I know that the city DQW is working on how to get that done. And then to monitor the underdrain pressure, which is going to be part of your SCADA upgrade project. Long-term, I think it would be best, and I don't know how practical this is ever going to be, quite frankly, because of the difficulties, but it would be best to disconnect that riser column that goes up to the old tank. Just get it out of there and put a blind clench on the pipe, so you don't have to manage that. And ultimately, backwash from an elevated tank, and we talked about the deboard tank. So that infrastructure's already in place, and a plan is being developed to do that. This is a depiction of that column. Basically, what we're suggesting is make sure that you evacuate the air. We talked about how to do that by starting, by purging the air when you're starting the backwash pump against a closed valve. Get the air out of it, and then seal that up with a tighter seal than that valve. And set up an air release and purge valve on that, so that every once in a while, you can get rid of any air that may still accumulate or the stagnant water that will accumulate in that, that you can move that out of that. Go back a little. Getting rid of the vortexing, basically, you're going to get rid of that by backwashing from the tank and then putting that valve on. We talked about this, this is backwashing from the deboard tank. Not even using the pump will help get rid of the vortexing.
How many gallons is the backwash tank?
7,200 gallons a minute for, how many minutes are you going, Bill?
15, 20.
15 minutes? Okay. So whatever that math works out to.
It's like 100-some thousand gallons per backwash, I believe. Let me do the math.
So does that lower the level in the deboard tank for that period of time?
It will. You'll see it drop a little bit, but the deboard tank is 3 million gallons, so it'll, it should barely put a dent in it.
What happens in the clearwell is, you know, it drops quite a bit, so...
180,000 gallons.
Your clearwell will stay more full. So just kind of summarizing, modifying backwash to eliminate the surges is critical. And we talked about a whole, a bunch of ways to eliminate air and what we call uncontrolled air within the system. That pretty much concludes my presentation. Do you have any more questions? I know you have our report, the city has a report.
How big a round is that pipe we keep talking about that's got the faulty gasket in there? How big a round is it?
I think 24.
24, yeah. 24 inches wide. And it's coming off, I think it's a 36-inch header in the basement, right? I think the backwash header's 36 inches, and then the next down's a 24, and it goes up the three stories.
Richard, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Very well got it. So the summary is, things you recommended, something we've already done, other things to see to if we complete those.
And actually, in the good news category, I was trying to find optimism on this, on the variable flow device. The water treatment plan is trying to get some cost estimates that may come in much, much less than what we had originally estimated, which means we could probably do that a heck of a lot quicker, which would resolve one of the issues that Mr. Strout described.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
This part of our meeting is public participation. If, somebody might get the lights. Ryan, you can get the lights. I thought it was right left. This is part of our meeting. If you have an issue, you'd like to run the report commission, we would like you to give your name and address, hold your comments for five minutes or less, and we'll work out the rest as best we can. Yes, sir.
Well, I'm Derek Shelton. I'm commander, O-76, Plant's Field, O-76. And I wanted to announce to everybody that we are going to reopen under the correct management.
Terrific. Great service.
We want to invite all the city employees. Anything going on in the city? As soon as we get everything together, we want to be a part of it. I don't care if it's a prayer or gospel saying we're buying somebody to join us.
Correct. That's great, very...
We were lucky, our attorney, David Nelson, he took it on a contingency basis. He said, "Boys," he said, "you want to help the veterans?" He said, "If we win it, pay me. If we don't win it, you don't owe me nothing." And I couldn't ask for a better counsel than that.
Absolutely.
So that's just more or less what I want to do. We've got some ideas to look forward to maybe putting in place. One of them is, hopefully, we can get the state convention here, since we've got the new hotel and everything going, bring that in. There's some other things that we would like to do. The one called the City Bar. I was watching TV, and I saw a pro mona club place over in North Carolina. And it started out with a barbecue cook-off. These guys brought their smokers in, you know, you put up a price, money. And then you get some regional eaters, which I think they're probably about to...
Got me in.
And they got me in. It's surprising what that built up to be. It started out one year, I don't know, it had 300% attendance. And after three years, they... And after three years, they hit five-hundred, six-hundred. Hey, it's over set everywhere. Now, we've got some things in the works that we'd like to implement, but we wanted to make sure everyone understood where we opened up. It's going to be run properly this town. Anytime we have drawings or anything like that, the officers will not be in line for any wins. Prior to that, a lot of people got disgusted. I don't know, I sat there the last night at the Blue Grove and there's seven people I saw winning and I don't want to concede that gone. But it's going to be run properly this town.
Well, that's great. I think we are an area that loves and supports our veterans and how we can be the city we are without that legion post, you know, being open and fostering and providing a place for veterans to build home, as well as anybody else in the community from time to time. But I bring that, you all stuck it out and make this happen.
Well, you know, I got to give a lot of credit. I was a trustee of the United Steelworkers for fifteen years. And had it not been those guys down there knowing me as well as me, we wouldn't have had, we didn't think they had us locked out of our building down there and we could have been in there to meet. But guys down there still were, I was like, "Here's the key, bring your thing around in this area you need." I said, "You guys know that you need home, as long as we got one, you guys are welcome there."
That's great work.
We all have to work together on that shit. But that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good news. Thanks for being here. Thanks for announcing that. Good news.
My name's Justin Littrell, I'm at twenty-nine fifty-five Gibbs Court. I'm not familiar completely with the terminology and I don't know the pronunciation of some of y'all's names, so no disrespect needed to me to make fun, use the wrong words and I'm very nervous. Yeah, I came in here to discuss the possibility of allowing conditional permitting for certain animals. I submitted a letter upstairs and I don't know if you all have had a chance to read it, this is the only day I can get into to my work and especially with you all moving the dates for the past two months into the twelve o'clock category, it's hard for people working nine-to-five to get into those dates. The main thing is, is me and my dad, we keep pets and we got some pet chickens and pet rats. Never once occurred to me that that would be an issue in the city of Ashland. Come to find out, the ordinance is that you cannot have them whatsoever. I asked about getting a permit, they're like, "We do not offer permits," to my surprise. Now, I'm not proposing that we have a pig farm next to me. I paid a hundred thousand dollars for my house, you know, paid a lot of taxes on it. I definitely don't want somebody coming in and then ruining my whole neighborhood trying to, you know, keep a cow in this order. I get that. But like my dad, we would keep it at his house because my yard is not big enough. He has a half acre land, it's fifty by four hundred feet, goes back in, it is butchered on the backside by stream and woods, deer all the time in his yard. And we put this stuff on the backside of property away from any buildings. And we spoke to both Don Perkins, our one neighbor, and to the Moores on the other side of us and asked them if they're okay with it. They were perfectly fine with it. So the problem that I have, hands, sorry to have served you two, it's going to miss you. The problem I have at hand is, you know, there's a certain point where yes, restrictions are good and you need to have those restrictions too, so that you do not have anarchy within the city limits. But also it's, there should be allowed some kind of leeway for people that want to do it as a hobby and want to do it as pets. And you may ask, "Well, why would you want these things as pets?" And you might be fear of some, afraid of somebody turning them into commercially use. Well, first things first, it's not the nineteen fifties. Back then, a dozen eggs went for roughly what would now be about five dollars a dozen. So yes, it was commercially viable for a family to raise their own chickens, to keep eggs on the table for their eight kids. Nowadays, the meat and the eggs is so cheap, it costs more in feed and hassle to raise a chicken. No one's keeping coop for eggs. It's because you want to become one with nature. As a veteran, you know, I've had things that have bothered me. I went to the VA for trouble and they prescribed me some medication to help with stuff and none of it helped. Made me like a zombie. There is nothing more peaceful in the heart than to walk back and see your chickens and to feed your chickens. They throw them a couple of night calls, it's the finest thing you've ever seen them running around. You may say rabbits, well, why rabbits? Well, back in the day, hundreds of some years ago, before people had modern hypoallergenic bed treatments, guess what? Those long-haired rabbits you see, they were actually raised to be the fur trim and they used the fur as hypoallergenic bedding. Why? Because they're natural hypoallergenic. So if you're allergic, like you talked about having dogs, if you're allergic to dogs or cats, you ain't going to have that problem with rabbits. So they're nice to keep as a pet for those purposes. I listed many things in my writing and you all can go back and read it. It helps not only veterans, if you have issues with things that you dealt with, it can help recovering drug addicts. If you've ever raised a garden, want to ask me how peaceful and calming it is to raise something in your garden? The problem with that is it's seasonal. It is seasonal, so that help, only helps certain times of the year. But when you can have chickens, that's year-round and that is a wonderful feeling. And it is so, once again, I'm not asking you all to allow somebody to put a seventy-thousand bird commercial grade operation in South Ashland. I'm not asking you all to immediately vote today and say, "Oh, let's just throw the doors open." I'm just asking that you all ask the co-commission, I believe it's Pullman or one of some of these people there, to make some recommendations for the possibility of what restriction you want, be it if you got to get letters from your neighbors, have a certain distance of the coop to your neighbor's house, a restriction of the number of chickens you could have or rabbits, just like you would with dogs, and charge a nominal fee if you got to have or building come out and check your property before you get the permit, check your setup. That's perfectly reasonable. All you got to do is ask them to give recommendations. I'm just asking you to look into it. Not asking you specifically, I'm just asking to please take, give a chance, open your minds to it. You know, I got five children, they're talking about getting rid of my pets, you know, at least give my children a chance to, you know, say, "Hey, keep these pets." You may say, "Well, and rabbits also." I just wish you all would change that to pets and treat it like a dog and just restrict how many you can have, because I don't even consider that a farm animal. And I, it's shocking that they still, that you all haven't classified as farm animals. But you can't keep them, you don't want to keep them indoors all the time, it's not natural, you kind of want to let them outside some, they can even make leashes born. And I like to let them in the yard. The fact of the matter is, the number one killer of pet rabbits in a home is chewing on electrical wires in your home, electrocution. You got to kind of let them get out and run. So I just want to make sure that if you have a hutch in your house with one or two rabbits and you take the rabbit out, you don't have the city of Ashland telling you to get rid of your pet. And so like I said, once again, I would like you all to just relook at these rules and consider conditional permitting for certain animals and at least that for rabbits, if not even go as far as to treat rabbits more like a cat and a dog and just restrict the numbers you can have and restrict what they have. And that's all that I'm asking.
What's your name again?
Justin Littrell and I'm at twenty-nine fifty-five Gibbs Court. The property where I'm keeping it is at my dad's at twenty-two oh-two High Street. And my dad's Charles Littrell, he's listed on the thing and code gave us till, extended us till August, so see if you all would consider it or not. So I'm just hoping you all will look into it.
There's procedures we have to follow. Right now, the zoning ordinance prohibits those type animals. The change can't, the institute at the commission level has to go through the planning commission first. Planning commission then would make a recommendation, if there's a request, that to either change, recommend to change the ordinance or to not change the ordinance. Whichever recommendation they make to you, you all can then make the change at that one time. If you were agreeing to make a change though, what you would probably be doing would be to make it a conditional use, which would mean that we then have to go before the BCA on a case-by-case basis to consider whether or not those would be allowed as a conditional use or not. But the first step and somebody you need to institute is go to the planning commission at their meeting and tell them just what you've told this commission, make that proposal, then the planning commission can determine whether they think that's a good idea or not and make a recommendation to you all for your ultimate decision.
And the planning commissions in all volunteer board made up of citizens of the city of Ashland?
Problem I have is, I'm not attorney. I came here because that's what people, you know, your arse has suggested and what different people, so I can go and I will do this. It's also a problem of being able to make it to some of these commissions. I'm not an old retiree that's available to come in at some of these times that it's being allotted. So, I mean, you're telling me that even at their level, they can't ask that commission to look into those things?
No, sir. The zoning laws were mandated by the state of Kentucky and they have to start a certain place and they end a certain place and this commission doesn't have the authority. If all five of these people voted today to do what you've asked, I'd have to tell them that's illegal. Can't be done that way.
Yeah, there's a, has to go through the procedures.
I thought that was in the city ordinance that was separate from the zoning.
It's a, zoning is controlled by state, allows the city to have ordinances that set zoning regulations. Those state organizations or those state rules say you have to have a planning commission. Changes in these zoning ones have to start the planning commission. That's just the way this law is and I can't change that and they can't change it.
How do you get ahold of this planning commission?
Well, they have, they meet once a month and they, you can come in there just like you have today, that's what I'm saying. And you can tell them what your proposal and what you're asking them to do. And as Commissioner Perkins pointed out, this is not, this is a group of citizens, none of them are city, full-time city employees, they're citizen volunteers who meet to make those kind of determinations and recommendations. Then the process follows through and whatever their recommendation is, ultimately that decision then is made by this board, but it has to be heard there first and then it has to be passed up with a either positive or negative recommendation.
Can you submit it in writing if you cannot make their meetings?
Well, you could. It'd be better if you could make their meeting or somebody could make their meeting.
And to be honest with you, I think we probably should have communicated that to you when you made your request, which, what the process is and how to get there, because part of that is good communication, so we may have dropped the ball there.
I think with all due respect, the city court did.
Did, were you aware of the planning commission?
I can't see where they wrote down this meeting.
I remember when they came in the office and she talked to you about that. It's not an easy process to understand.
Yeah, it is. It's a very difficult process and that's all I'm trying to say is it's not being a water, this is the first time I've ever stepped foot in one of these meetings. Or even tried to communicate any issues with the city of Ashland, it's not that I would understand. And you, people that deal with the daily work within this building, it might be obvious, just like I'm in the medical field, if I try to talk to somebody who's a medical guardian and try to explain the procedure that I do, in my mind, I've explained it to where a child can understand it. Most of the time, my patients are looking at me going, "What?" That's pretty much what's coming from this end of this is the issue. It's not very, not very clear.
Well, there's a process in place to protect citizens, protect you too. That's why it's in there. There's got to be a stage, a check and balance on anybody that makes requests, you know, you may sell your house, decide you don't want to take them. I mean, you're only one individual trying to be upfront and honest about this and there are people that may have something right now around the town, hide them out to the neighbors, not worry about, that's all well and good, but it also is, you know, it's just protection for every citizen that go through kind of a chain of commissions. And there's a good reason for that. I mean, because there have been people that have all kinds of things that are very invasive and damaging to a neighborhood and we try to protect the sanctity of neighborhood everywhere. You may have those both neighbors moved, new neighbors come in, wow, allergic to chickens or rabbits or whatever else, you got to think about those things. But there's an area, Ms. Wheeler, you all meet, he's our other attorney who's usually in all of those meetings and when is the next planning commission meeting?
It's based upon permit, Catherine, I'd say, is coming up right now to meet with the code enforcement, that would be in Scott East and up with him, Susan Maddie's to meet with him. I've seen in the building, the process has been adequately explained, but Catherine, it starts with an application to the planning commission. Catherine will go through that with him again, you know, will explain it once more. And the paperwork that he needs to start that, if that's what he wants to do, will be available to him today, if that's what he likes.
And I'm sure you get this board, the board that's going to talk to you or hear your case, they're going to be very receptive to hearing what you have to say, they're going to come in with no prejudice.
One thing you need to understand the process too, everybody, and this may seem like a burdensome process, but just as you're for that, there may well be people that are against her. And part of the reason you have to go through this process and notice and applications is so, just like you can come in and talk in favor of it, other people may come in and talk against it. If the commission made a ruling today, people picked it up and read it in the newspaper and the next day they're going to say, "My gosh, I wanted to come, I wanted to speak against that animal in the neighborhood."
So that's part of that. That's why when I was bringing it up, I was just mentioning, opening it up to discussion and allowing.
There's no issue with opening up to discussion.
That's fine.
And there's no issue for you to come here today and tell us what your thoughts are? I mean, we appreciate it.
I'm baby Catherine.
Yep.
And there's Catherine right there. Strapper.
Mr. White, go out.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Debbie Sevis, executive director of Shelter Hope at twenty-nine forty-four Winchester. And I'm going to talk about some real happy and good news like the city manager talked about. I want to thank you all for the pickleball courts. You were talking about pickleball and I'm so glad you did, because Shelter Hope is having a pickleball tournament July thirteenth and fourteenth. And we are having it at Central Park, of course. Thankfully, we are doing this in partnership with the Ashland Kentucky Pickleball Club, which I did not know existed until we got into this process. And I understand, Mayor, you're really into this, so I brought registration forms so you can sign up for it. And I also brought flyers and I didn't know if that was appropriate, but we are doing this for the first time. And I appreciate the city's support of the nonprofit. You've always been very supportive of what we do as well as a lot of the other partnering community partners that we work with. As you know, we work with homeless in the community, we work with veterans and also we also have an emphasis on that in recent years. And we always appreciate your support and I know you have our city budget requests coming up for the second reading and again, thank you so much for that.
You may be the first group getting fundraiser out of this, I think you'll catch on.
Yeah, I really appreciate you starting that. I said, "Right, they're talking pickleball." I almost stood up, but I refrained.
This commission's responsible and we gave Mr. Murray the go-ahead to put those courts in and getting ready to add a couple more, but it gets filled up down there.
Well, I don't know anything about pickleball. The only thing I know about it is where the name came from. I asked that question, I don't know if you know that.
I do know.
Yeah.
The dog's name.
Yeah, the dog. The dog, back in the mid-sixties, the person invented it, the dog would treat the balls the dog's name was. Pickle. So I had to ask, where did that name come from?
Thank you for sharing that and are you going to leave that?
Is it allowed?
Give it to the clerk.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Interesting meeting, right? I worked on it a lot, I worked frequently. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like peer report finishing? We appreciate you being here. Old business I made.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing the Director of Mayor to Execute a School Resource Officer Agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and the Ashland Independent Schools District for the term July first, two thousand nineteen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing the Director of Mayor to Execute a Short Form Agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and HBR Engineering, Inc. for Professional Services for a Cost of Service Study of Rates Provoke the Water and Sewer Systems in the Amount of Seventy-two Thousand Dollars, as adopted by ordinance number twenty-one, series of two thousand nineteen, for the Department of Utilities.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing an Approving Change Order Number One, dated April seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Service Pump and Supply Inc., where a contract adopted by ordinance number thirty-nine, series of two thousand nineteen, regarding refurbishing and reinstalling one-flow serve model twenty-three GPM raw water intake pump for the Department of Utilities Division of Water Production.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing an Approving Change Order Number Two, between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Arrow Company, Inc., for changing the completion date from May eleventh, two thousand nineteen to July sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, for the Winchester Avenue Streetscape Project for the Department of Public Works.
Any discussion?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing the Director Steven E. Gilmore, Mayor, to Execute a Trust Participation Agreement for the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services General Insurance Trust for the year two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty.
For the Year 2019 to 2020.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Pupils Insurance Agency, LLC, Provide Insurance and/or Risk Management Support Services From July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, in the Amount of $25,000 And Authorizing Payment of the Same.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting and Enacting Supplants S-71, S-72, and S-73 To the Code of Ordinances of the City of Ashland.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Amending Ordinance Number 61, Series of 2019, Which Adopted by Reverend the Prepariment Regulations for the City of Ashland, Kentucky amended 2019.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Approving Change Order Number 1, between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and GRW Engineers, Inc., Regarding Their Contract to Provide Engineering Services For Pollard Mills Range Improvement Project. Making No Change to Project Total of $421,000. Redistributing Funds Per Pen to Contract with the Department of Community Development.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Quick-Link D to Convince Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Paul D. Stewart, Nellis Stewart, Savannah Montgomery, Regarding the Acceptance of the Donation of 3430 Central Avenue in East Ashland.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Voluntary Disclosure Agreement Regarding Occupational License Fees During the Period of February 1st, 2016 During Including January 31st, 2019.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Amending Section 2 of Ordinance Number 101, Series of 2018, Previously amended by Ordinance Number 161, Series of 2018, and Ordinance Number 41, Series of 2019, Which is Commonly Known and Referring to as the Budget Ordinance of the City of Ashland.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement With the Ashland Child Development Center, Inc., Subrecipient of $7,000 For the 2019 Program of Your Community Development Block Grant.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement With Ashland Community Kitchen, Inc., Subrecipient of $5,000 From the 2019 Program of Your Community Development Block Grant.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, To Execute an Agreement with Boyd County Council on A.G. Inc., Ashland Senior Center, Subrecipient of $14,000, for the 2019 Program of Your Community Development Block Grant.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing Stephen E. Gilmore, Mayor, to Execute an Agreement With Community Assistance Referral Service, Inc., Subrecipient of $30,000 For the 2019 Program of Your Community Development Block Grant.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement With Hillcrest Bruce Mission, Subrecipient of $18,000 For the 2019 Program of Your Community Development Block Grant.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement With Shelter Hope, Inc., Subrecipient of $5,000 For the 2019 Program of Your Community Development Block Grant.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Approving Loan Number 2019-M-02 to CCC Management, LLC, DBA, Gilmore Drug, in the Amount of $42,135.51, To be Paid from the 2018 Program of Your Community Development Block Grant And Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Loan Documents.
Any discussion? All favor?
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Fixing the Ad-Lo-Arm Tax Levy for the Year 2019, Payable in the Year 2019 on Real Estate Personal Property Franchises In the City of Ashland for the City Revenue Purposes, Providing for Discount of 1% on Ad-Lo-Arm Taxes Only, Which Are Paid On Before the 15th Day Following the Build Date And Approving a Penalty of 10% and 6% Interest per annum for any taxes Which Are Paid After the Due Date, Said Due Date being 30 days following the build date.
Any discussion? All favor? Any other old business? Counselor?
Consent Agenda. A Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting and Authorizing and Approving the Course of Action Presented by the City Manager on the Items Appearing on the Consent Agenda As amended for the Regular Meeting of the Board of City Commissioners on June 27, 2019.
Any discussion? All favor? New business out of May.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Five-Year Extension To the Housing Assistance Payments Contract Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Harbor Hill, LLC, Regarding the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Project-Based Assistance Housing Choice Voucher Program For the Department of Community and Economic Development Adopted by Ordinance Number 104, Series of 2009, And Repealing Ordinance Numbers 55 and 148, Series of 2018.
Any discussion? All favor?
I recuse myself.
Reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Donation Agreement Regarding Acceptance by the City of Ashland of Donation of Bronze Statues Known As and Depicted of Pulp, Venus, and Genesis.
They have two news on that?
Yes, they have four.
Eighty-four? They, they are on a ship, headed this way. Who knows beyond that, but I think it was estimated maybe 42 days and it's been about 12 or 15, I'm not sure. But the sculptor's keeping everybody notified in a certain circular way. I want to, thank God. But pretty exciting. He'll be in town in a couple of weeks and there's all kinds of stuff going on, obviously, in preparation of that. And you'll see a whole lot right after summer motion. Riverfront's opened up for what needs to be done down there to accept this. This is gonna be a very, very big time for Ashland, Kentucky.
All favor? Out of C.
A reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Service Repair Order Terms and Conditions Agreement With Otis Elevator Company to Provide Labor and Material to Furnish and Install Remote Hall-Bit Station In the Amount of $4,950 For Added Security for Use of the Elevator Located in the City Building at 1700 Green Avenue.
Any discussion? All favor?
Out of D.
A municipal order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Indemnity Agreement Between True North Tower, LLC, and the City of Ashland, Kentucky Regarding True North Tower's Temporary Use of Real Estate Property Belonging to the City of Ashland.
Any discussion? All favor?
The other new business. We have a motion to go in executive session to discuss one item, potential litigation. Only one item will be discussed. No action will be taken. Let's break a reflect that we returned at 14 till 2. Only potential litigation was discussed and no vote was taken. It was no other business.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn in memory of Nikki Smith today. A great friend of this county and of the city.
We will adjourn in memory of Nikki Smith. We'd like you to make sure. We're adjourned.